Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass that brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon. You're here with Mesa County Compass and today we are interviewing Mr. Randall Wright again. He is running for city council for another term and welcome Randall.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
Yes, pleasure to have you. And we're going to start with just a review for people, a little bit about your background.
Yeah.
And then a little bit about your campaign and I'll ask you on all of your different signs that I've seen, what you envision by what you're saying on the sign.
Sure.
Okay, so tell us a little bit about you.
So I've lived here in Grand Junction since 2000, so 25 years. My father was born here at St. Mary's.
Oh.
And my grandpa was a civil engineer working up on the Grand Mesa, building bridges. And I've always kind of thought my city council service is a form of building bridges also. We have three kids, two are in college, one's graduating in June, and then our youngest is a senior graduating from high school.
You're about to lose your family.
Are you worried about empty nest?
I've enjoyed every phase of life so far. I mean, we'll see, I mean, the three, two, one, it's, we've kind of prepared for that.
Yep.
Our oldest has a very serious boyfriend, so we're starting to look at, wow, that's, that's another phase for sure.
That's fun, yeah, that's really neat.
Married to a woman from Brazil. She grew up in the Amazon of Brazil, in a kind of way up north, in the rainforest. And we met dancing in Salt Lake City.
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
How amazing is that? See, that's all different than what you told us last time. I mean, not that, not that it wasn't true, you just didn't give us that information. Yeah, that's pretty neat.
I hear you're a dog person. I have, we've had many dogs. Both of them have, have both died now. I grew up with dogs also, and my kids wanted cats, and so we now have two cats. I've never taken to the cats as much as I did the dogs, you can't go running with them.
No, you can't.
But you can scratch them behind the ears and over time they come to accept you.
Right, right. On their terms.
On their terms, always.
If I'm interested in you, I'll come over. If I'm not, yes, stay over there. We were talking about that the other day and with Ken Scissors and he was, said, "It's like herding cats." And then he said, "But, but for you dog people, for you cat people, it's not negative." I'm telling. So I've noticed all the different signs. I don't think I've seen all of them, so.
Two in your neighborhood I saw.
I'm sorry?
There's two in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I saw those. How do you think I got two of my signs? So one said, "We have shared vision." What does that mean to you and how'd you come up with that?
Yeah, so I posed a column in the paper about what junction means. They had kind of looking at a coin, it says E Pluribus Unum on the coins. And that comes from the Revolutionary War, out of many, one, kind of creating one union out of 13 colonies.
Right.
I think Grand Junction has a very similar meaning. Like we have all these different rivers in Colorado, the Eagle River, the Plateau Valley River, and they all kind of join to the Colorado River and here in Grand Junction, we have the largest junction with the Colorado and the Gannison. And so in my mind, in my mind, that's like rivers becoming one river. And so that's like a grand junction. And so conjunction means to me connectivity, junction means collaboration, junction means shared vision, junction means.
Partnership.
Partnership.
Yes, so on, on those, on your partnerships, who do you see as your partners?
With the city and me as city council?
I, I don't know, because you're, you're explaining to me what your signs mean, going through those. What, what does the partnership mean? Who's the partnership with and how does that look?
You know.
In practice?
I think it's, it's essential. With all the big issues facing a city, you can't, the city can't do it by themselves and nor should they try. Cities do certain things well and certain things very poorly, and so I want to make sure that we are partnering with the ideal person or group for every issue, whether it's affordable housing, or the mental health crisis, or education. We don't do much education as a city. That's what this district does and CMU does, but we should be partnering with the district and with the university to make sure that they can do what they do the best.
And how would you do that? Or how do you do that? Do you, do you think you're doing that currently or do you think that that's something you want to see developed?
And more of.
Really happening right now?
I mean, I think it's always the, the effort, right? You always have to move forward. You think about, again, going back to the founding of America, we the people of the United States in order to form a more perfect union, right? We don't have a perfect union yet.
Nope.
We're working on it, we have amendments and we try and do better. And I think a more perfect union is like a grand junction, right? It's like junctions are unions. And so I think we're, we're working on it, we're doing better. I think some of the big partnerships we've had in my first term were around mental health. Obviously, that's a kind of a dear spot for being a mental health clinician. So we don't want to be training social workers, that's not our job, but that's what CMU does. But we can put some money from our COVID relief funds towards creating a student loan repayment program for social workers to stay in the community after they graduate.
Okay, so do you have many COVID relief funds left that's available?
They've all been expended.
Okay.
We also use them to purchase a, an old house on Orchard Mesa that is being repurposed by the Council Education Center to be a nonprofit mental health center out there.
Okay.
Now, we don't want to provide, provide the services ourselves, but we want to make sure they're provided in our community.
Okay, good, because I do want to come back to that mental health situation and just, I don't know if it's better to talk now about it or, because I keep wanting to go through your poster and I don't want to get sidetracked so I don't come back.
I'll follow your lead.
There's a rabbit, there's a rabbit in charge today that's just kind of going bunny trails everywhere. Well, that's always something that bothers me with the homeless is that, you know, they say, I, what percentage do you think are people that are, have mental health? I guess we can put it mental health and addiction or which, would you divide it up? And how are we addressing it and how can we better address it? So is it that they don't have the access to the help or is it that they don't want to do, want to use that for some reason? What do you see as the problem there? And how much of the homeless is the result of one or the other?
Yeah, I talked about a complex issue.
Right.
It increased by 18% nationwide last year, the unhoused. And you know, I do think that there's, you look at their histories and who they are and what they're going through, a lot of it has to do with substance use and mental health. I think the bigger issue there is, is trauma. They've been through traumatic experiences in their lives and that's kind of what leads to mental health issues and, and substance use. There definitely are people, a smaller subset that prefer to not be in congregant settings, who want to be outside, living with their freedom, as their view of freedom is not having to be under a roof or having anyone tell them what to do. You know, but I think it's a great place for partnership. The, the city, we don't want to be running many services for unhoused, but we do want to make sure that they are available in our community so we can both do right by those people, but also mitigate the impacts they would have on our parks and our, on our streets.
But in that, I guess the question was that, do you think we, they have access to the help that they need? Is that an area? Because I understand that they need a, a place to stay, but in order to make that move up and to integrate with the society.
Yeah.
They need to get better and they need to be able, because if, if I've got somebody that's a, say a substance abuser, I'm not going to hire them because they're not reliable and they might not do a good job. So I know a lot of places, like my friends that have a construction industry, they require a drug test and many of their applicants can't pass it. I mean, not that are homeless even, they just are a lot of use.
Just in.
Yeah.
So I'm, I guess my question is, is there enough help and are they accessing the help that's available, so?
So I, I would say, no, it's not enough and we do better in our county and our city than most places do.
Okay.
Speaking about the services specifically, that's where my, a lot of my career has been in services for the unhoused. And so for Catholic Outreach, they have a day center. And I've either volunteered there or worked there or been supervising clinicians there for 25 years. And so St. Mary's Family Medicine is there on Friday mornings, Marilac goes on Monday mornings, there's a psychiatry group that goes on Wednesday mornings. And when we go there, there is a physician and a therapist there every Friday, providing services. Similarly, at the Pathways Family Shelters where women and families live, they have a full-time embedded clinic in there that's staffed by a therapist and a nurse practitioner. And those same clinicians go to the North Avenue Shelter. So I, I think we do better than most places. I think the addiction part is still insufficient. I think we do better around substance, around mental health issues than on substance use because that often requires a higher level of service and it can, it can be pretty expensive.
Right. A question for you. So with Catholic Outreach and the Joseph Center and the other nonprofits that are in, where does the Resource Center fit in?
Yeah, I think the Resource Center i- is one piece of the puzzle, right? It's not going to be the, the solution to any one thing, but it's, it's one piece of the puzzle. I don't think it belongs downtown. And I'm glad we're going to be moving away from downtown. We're going to be closing that down April 15th or sooner. You know, I think some things that does well, especially being over on North Avenue, where we'll probably be, is it provides a service during the day. People can go there to see a physician, see a nurse, to get access to the computer and look for jobs, get food, have a place to get out of, out of the elements. And so I think that's what it does well. It's somewhat similar to what the day center does, but aiming for a broader population and more hours a day. But I think the day center has probably been the, the best example of that that I've ever seen.
Day center works functionally very well.
It does.
The problem being with that is that they have rules and regulations, whereas the Resource Center has been more a low, low barrier. So there isn't that much.
I would say that's, that was very true up until early December. I think we got lots of police calls in there, lots of drug busts, lots of complaints from the neighbors, and then that's pretty much all gone away over the last two months since they closed it down for two weeks, trained their staff, changed the policies, people get carded coming in and out. It's been a much middle barrier, not low barrier since then.
Okay.
It was, it was a big issue. I mean, you know, we have like Ben Van Dyke is running because that issue, because I think his, his car washed, you know, and even he would say that it's gotten far better. And they would still say, please don't have that downtown, please have somewhere else. And I think it makes sense to have it close to the shelter and to the pub, the public's health department with Mesa County and Marilac Clinic being right over there. And so it's hopefully a better place to work.
Yeah, it, and what is the difference? I know a low barrier means that as long as you're not violent, you can be in any condition.
I honor your rights and you honor my rights and we're, we're cold.
So what's a middle level barrier? I guess, I don't know. And is that the same level that they would have, say, at the day center?
I would say pretty similar. I mean, definitely they, at the day center, people will be kind of discharged and told not to come back for a week sometimes. Jody does a good job of having a pretty tight vision of making sure it's a safe place.
Right, right.
And I think, I think a middle barrier is like saying, it's our responsibility to make sure this is a safe place for people, you know? Vulnerable people like a, a woman with children could be here alongside someone who has an addiction. We wouldn't want someone to be openly using in a middle barrier place.
Right.
And if someone has, has been, you know, repeatedly given warnings, they should be not told to come back for a certain time, time, time period, and if that happens again permanently, we have so much more worries now.
And the, I know when I was on Orchard Mesa, working with State Farm, we did a thing for Orchard Mesa trying to make them feel like they're not the stepchild of the city.
Yeah.
Because it, it just, you know, didn't look that, it wasn't that attractive and people weren't moving there and we went down and met with John Shaver and some of the other people and.
City attorney.
And not, you know, trying to say, how can we make this better? And we did like a poker run and did some fun activities that, trying to build that up. But the main thing was too, there was another group on North Avenue and they said that North Avenue is the cold facts of Grand Junction.
Okay.
And that, that's my biggest concern with moving it, moving the Resource Center out there. Are you just taking an area that's a little bit rundown anyway and making that, just saying, well, we've given up on you or, because there are going to be problems with moving that center there too. And how do, how do the people around it feel about, you know, I know it's everybody says, "Not in my backyard."
Right.
So what do you think? Is there anything that, that city can do to alleviate those concerns?
To make it a little more palatable.
For sure. You know, I'm on the Grand Junction Housing Authority. I think one thing they do very well is when they make new housing, they spread them around the, the city. There's some on Patterson, there's some, I live right next to Radican Towers, there's some for older adults over on like Book Cliff and Seventh Street. We're building new ones over by the mall. And so having services that are spread around town a little more, I don't think we need to duplicate the day center and the Resource Center.
Right.
Looking at lots of each other.
Right, right, right.
It doesn't make sense, since I'm spreading it a little bit more. I think, you know, we haven't, we've gotten only two emails since we had, since it was disclosed that we might be looking at that part of town. Both of them were like, you know, are you sure this is the right spot compared to the justifiedly upset people coming to city council meetings and emailing us for the, for the downtown. I think there is the, the sense of, let's try and get people close to services.
Right.
And that's the advantage of being, being there. But it's not, but I think it's not going to be ideal for everybody.
Right.
And it might be something where down the road, we shift it somewhere else.
So, go ahead.
I was going to ask, what, what are you planning on doing in the interim period? You're going to close down on the 15th of April. There's going to be an interim period.
Yeah.
There that you're not, either not going to have that purchased or it's not going to be ready in any case.
Or, or we might choose not to purchase it. I mean, we were going through the due diligence to see if it's something we want to purchase, but then we still have to do the due diligence of.
Of course.
Of deciding what the council wants to do, what the committee wants us to do. And so it's not.
Are you accepting community input on this now?
After we've done due diligence to know what's, you know, what's, what's in it. I mean, people are going to give us feedback regardless, right?
Right, exactly.
But there will be a period of, of due diligence with the public after we decided to proceed or not.
Okay, I would hope that it would be better than Fourth and Fifth Street. And that's just my little blog right there.
Thank you. I, I agree 100% on that.
Okay. Well, and on that too, because it may be an explanation to people why you wait until after due diligence. I, I can kind of understand because it, it may feel like if it's said, okay, we've done our due diligence, it's a good thing, we're going to move ahead. If you don't get the input ahead of time and you make the contract, then it's like, well, you people are just the rubber stamp, not the actual input. I understand on the other hand though, having done asbestos inspections for my last career, that I'm going, hmm, that building may have, on the drywall inside because it's old.
Yeah.
And that's expensive to abate and it may not be worth moving that around to try to abate that.
Yeah, and I think the tricky thing is you want to make sure it's a viable structure and that would meet our needs. And we, we kind of went through 20 different options or more over the, the first couple of months. And we settled on one as a good option. We couldn't really have that due diligence with every single building along the way.
No, because that would be expensive, right?
Right. And I would, I think it would be upsetting to other neighbors. Oh, are we next, are we next, are we next? You know, and so having a process where we're kind of like, we get our, our best idea and then we improve it even more with people from the community is what I'm hoping to have happen.
Okay, so still, back to my question.
Yes.
What are you going to do in the meantime with these people?
Well, I mean, I, I think that's a good question. We could be closed by April 1st or April 15th, for sure, by April 15th. I think the options are a lot better in April than they are in December and January in Colorado. And so I think we will have fewer needs for an all-day structure in April. That's, that's our hopes, right?
Well, unless we get the rains that have not been all winter, which is very likely to come in the spring.
I hope so.
I hope so too, true.
The, I will say that them having the, the Resource Center is far better than what they had in Whitman Park for decades, you know? And so we are already trying to do a, a better thing by our community and by our people who live here. And we have lots of good partners who are very committed to them, churches, nonprofits, good-hearted people. And we will, I'm sure we'll have to rely on them a little more for the, in the short term.
So going back, so you, you are planning that? We don't know what will happen, they just might be out in the open until you're able to do something for them. We think that they have enough resources, not as many as you'd like to see for mentally ill. Do you see the, the disadvantage I see to what they've done is been, you know, we keep offering the resource until they accept it. In your experience with people that are drug addicted, is that something that they reach out for eventually? Because I know that's the difference between the day center and Catholic Outreach is that, not day center, is that those people come because they want to get help. They're going to, you know, like Catholic, where the soup kitchen is, they go there for counseling and for, for treatment, but they're making the move out and saying, okay, I, I'm coming here and I'm acknowledging that I need some help.
Yeah.
Would we be better spent maybe creating more places for those? I know Salvation Army used to have the.
Their own shelter.
Mm-hmm, with their own shelter.
They had like a, a 12-month program for addiction.
Yes, yes.
And that, would money better be spent there, helping those people to have that available to them? And maybe just having a place that said, you know, mid-level barrier again, with a coffee shop and having pe, these are just ideas. They're not saying, but having those people just come in, be able to get out of the, the rain or the snow or the elements for a period of time, but saying, you know, if you're coming in and using this, this coffee shop, you will be expected to visit with somebody to, to help you, not you can just come in and sit. Because that was one thing Jody said, we don't want them just hanging out, we want them to be doing something.
Making progress somewhere.
Yeah, what do you think?
Totally agree, 100%. And I think it's having the right services available at the right time for people when they're having that window of openness to change and to making a next step. I would love to see us partner with somewhere like Marilac Health to have a full-time clinician down there all the time. To partner more closely with Mesa County workforce to have a employment coordinator down there full-time.
They can't. They don't have the money.
Yeah, well, I mean, they're going to provide the services in their building, siloed somewhere else, or they can provide them in, in a place where people are already. It, it costs a little more, but that's what, how partnership can work is you can have, you say, "Our job is to provide services for employment."
And so.
And you can do it here or you can do it here.
Have, have you reached out to them?
I have not personally.
Yeah, I mean, as city council.
I mean, for sure to the health providers.
Yeah.
I, I don't know what, what Homeward Bound has done for unemployment. I would definitely want that to be a part of what we're doing. We have to have computers brought in and other things like that to make it feasible because a lot of employment right now is around computers and applying for jobs and stuff.
Oh, absolutely. And even for older people, that as they lose their, lose their jobs, they haven't gotten that computer savvy that they need that too.
Until you're retired, I think there are certain people who just aren't ready for employment, like the construction jobs where they first get sobriety, first get yourself stabilized with mental health, first get out of a traumatic situation, and then, once you're kind of stable and doing things better, looking at work.
Have you ever heard of the Doe Foundation?
How's that spelled?
D O E. It, it came from a guy in New York City that used to go give sandwiches out to the poor, you know, that were living in subway stations. And he had grown close to this woman and then he came back on a cold night and she was dead. And so he started the, and when they, they put, you know, when she was dead, they put on Jane Doe. So he called it the Doe Foundation.
Nice trivia.
And, yeah, but it was more that, he said, "I'm giving them sandwiches, but I'm not really helping them get out of the situation." And so this is for people that, the people that apply either have been just getting out of being incarcerated or they're drug addicts or alcohol. And what he does is he says for 90 days, we, he calls it, "Push the broom."
Push the broom.
And what they do is he gives them, they're cleaned up, he gives them uniforms, they're in a, a treatment program, but they clean the city. And he said just how good they feel that they're, you know, people talk to them because they're, you know, clean, cleaner, and they tell them, "Thank you for cleaning that up." And they pay a minimum wage. And then they take 60% of what they're paying them for those 90 days and put it in savings for them. So they're providing housing and they're providing food and they're providing employment right then. Then after the 90 days, they do an assessment for a skills program. And they have such a high rate of success for people that come through that program. And, you know, New York City's a, a big deal and they've received rewards and stuff. And I'm wondering if, again, using money instead of, you know, saying, "We're going to move you here," maybe not all of it, you can do some of it, but putting some towards something that says, "We're going to help you, but your part is to say that you need the help and you're going to work and we're going to help you be able to work."
Yeah.
And builds your self-esteem.
It does.
Because that seems to be the biggest problem that we have with the homeless is that many of them, even though they are drug addicted, are, are alcohol or whatever else, have lost all self-esteem.
Yeah.
They've just hit the bottom of the barrel.
And they don't see any hope, no, no hope.
No hope, you're exactly right. And I think that's something that like Joseph Center does very well is they go from being a, a person staying in their shelter to a volunteer in the shelter.
Right.
To being paid staff and to working in Joseph Center and kind of get, helping with job assistance and networking.
Agreed.
And I think that's a great model.
Yeah.
Many, many good models for this type of stuff.
Right.
And I think our job is to partner with the right people to bring those models to our community.
Okay.
Partnership.
Partnership. I, I do think that's important. I, and I think that it's important to be recognized, you know, should we let those people do it or how, you don't want to make it so that taxpayers feel like we're tithing.
Right.
You know, that that's what the city's decided your tithe is and this is, is it the city's function to do that? And I guess that's what I was questioning when they were talking about 2 million going toward Homeward Bound. Does it have to go that way? Does it have to go toward Homeward Bound? Is it already fixed in the budget that that's the only way that money can be used?
It's not. I think, I just had a meeting last week with John Shaver and Craig and Mike Bennett, so he's a city attorney and city manager. And we're going to probably do an RFP process or request for proposals to see who would be the best partner to, to run this. Or how can we divide it up to have it be run by different organizations?
Okay, but, but the money is definitely for the building?
We are committed to having some sort of structure.
Okay.
It could be that building, could be something else. We, we're still in the due diligence process. But I think having a structure where people could be congregating is, we're committed to that as being the next step. But what services would be provided there, who would run them? Whereas that building is still very much under discussion.
I just got a really dumb question. What are you going to do with the existing building?
That was mine. That was my question, dang it.
There are people who would like to buy it from us.
No.
Oh, really?
So what I was told is that there is a, a group that would come in and take it down and we, we would pay them, I think it was like $70,000 to do that. So uh what I was told is that there is a a group that would come in and take it down and we we would pay them, I think it was like seventy thousand dollars to do that. And they already told us, and if you sell us the tent, we would do it, we would pay you much more than that for the tent itself. And so we could, that'd be one option.
Yeah, so we, but we did spend nine hundred and eighty four thousand on the tent, we're not gonna recruit that.
No, it'd be much more like a like a third of that would be a good price for it, it it's pretty worn out right now. I go there on Saturdays and 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 serve food and definitely the floor is kinda warped and getting worn out and it's gotten lots of good use for sure.
Yeah, but well, I just, the whole thing, when I'm looking at it not being insulated, I was like, for winter. I I just really didn't think that the tent was a great idea as far as the structure for people.
And not not intended to be a long term solution for sure.
Kind of a knee jerk reaction closing Whitman Park, I think, just something that you felt pushed into doing.
Yes, I think that that was an area where I think council were surprised by the decision, um I found out about it from the news.
Then who made that decision?
By city manager, you know, and so that's something that a lot of us were upset by.
Was that Greg Keaton?
Yeah, you know, um and as it comes to like day to day management of things.
Well, that's not day to day management though, I mean, that's that's a big decision.
A lot of us talked about, should we overrule the decision, you know, we all chose not to at the time, it was, I mean, it was, it felt like. That yeah, it it that isn't within within his purview to do that.
Yeah, way outside the purview.
It was a big decision for sure and the opening the Resource Center was a way for us to um. Address a need that wasn't being met before, I think Whitman Park um for better or worse was not meeting people's needs. Their needs, the community's needs, there were no families going there, there were, you know, and people who were there were were exposed to violence and. The elements.
Right, it was it was not an ideal situation, it was better than living on the river however. Which many of them went to rather than to go through the Resource Centers. Triangle or whatever you wanna call it.
There's a a constant need to keep parks, you know, um viable and and enjoyable and so we invested money in Emerson Park. And now I live a block from there and every night there's thirty kids skating still, you know, I had not seen a family there for years before I was. It was it was it was had been um abandoned to just be an urban blight and 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 people around the house and and now that's. Completely different setting.
So what do you think about Hawthorne Park, do you think that that's where we should be? Whitman Park, I just, cause I think I like Hawthorne Park. I know where it is, you guys, it's over on between Fourth and Fifth on Gunnison. Whitman, what do you think about redoing that, do you think that's a good use of money, especially right now when we have a projected shortfall of? For the next four or five years?
Um you know.
Or should it be put on hold for a while?
I think it's gonna be on hold and par- kinda partial out over time. Um they came back with a a beautiful plan. With musical elements and maybe some pickleball courts and a a a dog park and but it's just not within the budget right now. And so and so it's gonna be, you know, how could we spend, you know, a small fraction of that a- and and open it up again? In a way that won't be um be open to families and and people to use it from the broader community. At at a starting point and then over time, if that's going well, adds other amenities, but I don't see us spending five million dollars in the next five years on that. I wish we could, but there's just not.
It would be beautiful, but it is and there's no no parking.
There's no parking, it's between four busy streets.
State highways, right?
Yeah, so it's kind of a.
Take your stroller at your own risk.
And Emerson Park has the exact same elements and it's being used, I think, to its highest best use right now. You know, it's it's not good for a playground, but it's great for kids who wanna skateboard.
Well, they're older. So they can, you don't usually see a five year old out there by himself skateboarding.
No, you don't.
Unless he's Olympic material. Just gonna go out there and I highway be damned, I'll just I'll just go mom, don't worry about me. So Ruth, um what's your next question for him?
Caught me off guard. Even thinking that route right now, go ahead. If you've got something, you were on the signs and what.
So we've got partnership.
Connectivity, talk about connectivity.
Okay, but I wanna go back to partnership just a little bit. On on your partners, um you said like the school, you'd like to partner more with them, I'm not. I CMU I heard, but I'm not sure about the regular schools and um. I do, cause it I think, I'm just going back and just pick just a little bit, but when you say the um. Like the Workforce Center. Them coming out, they do go out frequently, they do job fairs, they're available there. And but they also are not, they just don't have the personnel. To dedicate to that and they don't have the budget in those areas, I mean, they have budgets in other areas that. For different purposes, but one of the things that I don't know if city council people do, when you're looking at partnerships is go out there and actually. Go in and see what they do, see who they work with, see how many people they're working with, because and this is um some friends of. Of mine that, you know, the old uh county commissioners, they did like a ribbon cutting or an event. They took the pictures on the outside and never came in to the building. So how do you know what they have available and if you don't go and you don't sit and you don't see. Who they're working with and what kind of programs that they have being in there. And that was always my problem with, like when I taught, one of the ways that I got a a better room. Was I had thirty five kids, I had them on the radiators in the middle of the winter and Junction High School was your old, the the old one. It was so hot in there and I had all the doors open and I had the school board come in and they said, nobody can live in this. You know, and they said, you need a different room and I go, you can't, you've got too many kids in here and I thought, until people come in, they're. All good about telling you what you should do, because they think that's what you do, but they don't recognize what are the barriers. Toward your partnership and how can those be eliminated? Cause partnership sounds great, but you have to go to your partner and see, is that something you can do for us?
That's a great question, and and I think even beyond that, the partnership needs to have every both people getting out of it what they're what they're wanting. We have our mission, the city has a mission, workforce has a mission, nonprofits have missions, churches have missions and 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 making sure that. What I'm providing this is still staying true to my mission. So like um Hilltop under Sally Schaefer, she was a previous CEO, always had a big collaboration event where she would invite people. To come to the place and everyone would invite a guest and they would honor them as being a good collaborator. And um I was I was only recognized once for that, going back twenty years or so, but it was by someone from workforce. Cause i- in my br- my uh kind of area of mental health services is is all about collaboration, it's about, you know. How do I get to have this therapist in an atypical place, like I've only ever practiced in in nonprofit medical centers. But I would take patients to the workforce center and introduce them to the same person every time, he was my go to guy there. And and we would have their intake would be you, me, the patient and this workforce um advisor. Talking about workforce together. And and he had not seen that before. And so because I was wanting to always meet him where he was and go to his place and make sure we had a a kind of a warm handoff instead of someone just being referred to the the abyss. Me as being a great collaborator.
That is good collaboration, so when you're talking partnerships, are you talking partnerships and collaboration? How are you gonna get everybody to recognize the value of what you do and to feel included? Because I may be quite, you know, I may say, well, well, what's in it for me, are you, how are you really looking out for? My needs as a taxpayer and as a citizen, you know, I I might not feel, cause I I have felt. Especially on Fourth and Fifth, which we won't, I won't push too much. But you know, that they weren't listening, they just weren't listening, made up their mind and that's what we're gonna do and. This is the data that we're using, but you know, if if you have different opinions or different, we know best. Cause I think that makes people more angry than anything. Is when you come in and say, we know best, so you need to shut up and pay. Because that's what it is, it's a payment, it's money, if you use money one way, you can't use it somewhere else.
It's a lot like the impact fees, same thing.
So I I think how do people um. How do we engage them, I'll go back to mission and values, you know. You two have this value of creating communication amongst the community and so you host a podcast with people who um you think have some sort of. Influence on what happens in the community and so that value leads you to do this. You're retired, you can do what you want through time, play pickleball all day, instead you're doing podcasts. Something about this compels you to do that, you know, and so that's what your values are, that's how you manifest your values and. You know, workforce has their values and the city has their values, home builders have their values and and and. I think it works best when we're aligning our values and finding spots where we can work well and stay true to our values and so that's, to me, that's the heart of all of it.
Okay, it's the heart of all of it, but that doesn't mean much to me, I I don't understand that in practical terms, I understand that in philosophy. What does that look like in practical terms?
Let's talk about housing. You know, so we have this uh affordable housing crisis right now. Um and there's all sorts of different people involved in it, all sorts of partnerships and collaboration. Um and so the city does not wanna own housing, that's not, that's not what we do, but we do want to um stimulate housing. At all levels of of the economic spectrum, you know, and so we're not gonna uh build a a a an apartment, we're gonna purchase some land. In a blighted patch of between Fourth and Fifth Street and, well, actually, I'm sorry, between Uton Picken, we're gonna take down an old asbestos ridden building. And we're gonna give it to Catholic Outreach and that's where they built this um Mother Teresa place. And we're gonna waive their impact fees and we're gonna help them with a little bit of money from the COVID relief funds and they're gonna have this new place that will serve our community for forty years.